Recording in progress. Recording in progress.
Conference room, camera is working. Perfect, thank you. Okay, hi, everybody. We are returning from closed session. Before we jump into the next thing, we are going to do report, report presentation from closed session.
Anybody need it?
It's coming out from here. Okay, there you go. All right, Dr. Hurst, do we have anything to report out from closed session?
Nothing to report out.
Okay, so for our second area, so our next item, we are going to include our governance workshop. For the first section, we're doing a board meeting management slide and conversation. Okay, let's see on the screen. Would you mind going to present, Dr. Hurst? Perfect, and then I share it with all of you as well, if you'd like to follow on your own. If you could go to the next slide. So first, we're going to do a small activity. We're going to partner. And the things that I would like for us to discuss is what is and is not working when it comes to the structure, flow, and efficiency of our board meetings? And then with your partner, if you could write down two strengths and two areas of growth that you think that we need for our, for our actual board meetings? And then we're going to actually share them as a group, and then we'll have seven minutes. So for this section, why don't we partner trustee Reckler with trustee Christian? Maybe, Dr. Hurst, would you mind joining them? And then clerk Smith Folds, you and I and Rosa, if you'd like to join, we can be a group. So we'll have seven minutes for this section. For the public, we're going to mute as we are talking partners, and then we'll come out and unmute for the sharing. Okay, and again, structures, flow, and efficiency, strengths and areas of growth. And then if you could bring two strengths and two areas of growth as a group, we'll discuss them. Okay, any questions? Okay, let's get straight to it.
Is registration time on this side?
And assistant can join us as well.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we are.
We seem to be getting on time too.
Yes, so basically you don't feel like going all over the place.
I do like getting the closed session documents ahead of time.
What are you doing?
So, yeah, talking about things I don't know. I have one thing that I use for it. So it's like we need to come up with two strengths and two areas. That was one report.
Oh, you know, the sound is better now. It's actually a lot better. I don't know about anybody else, but that really affects me. Except for the facilities where I couldn't hear anything.
The way it's set up now is much better.
Way better.
Oh, I thought you meant like this little thing we're doing now.
Yeah, they set up that's a whole lot to do. With how everything is coming, you know.
Starting and ending up there, yeah. And with that, I think that's a general stop's presentation.
Yeah, having the limits, following the limit.
Any other strengths there?
This is not a good growth because it was just a mistake. But when she read the whole resolution, it freaked me out. Most of them were bad.
Like, I was just like, oh, lord.
Yeah, let me bring it to her attention. Just ordered by y'all. I think everybody looked around like. It made the first resolution, but when you get one, you have to turn around and do the other one. Yeah, like, here we go.
Hey, everybody. Share our groups. We'll start with the group with trustee Christian, trustee Reckler, and Dr. Hurst. Who's your reporter? Are you the one reporting?
You go ahead, trustee Reckler.
We did not choose a reporter, but I could do it.
Oh, wonderful.
Beginning on time, ending on time, getting some closed session documents ahead of time.
I'm sorry, trustee Reckler. Sorry, we're reporting him. It's okay, go ahead. Could you restart, trustee Reckler?
Sure, so beginning on time, ending on time, getting some closed session documents ahead of time. The sound is better, much better up on the stage. And the process has been streamlined, I guess, with the consent of the parliamentarian. Right? She hasn't said anything or been.
It was her idea. Yeah.
So those are the some strengths, some opportunities for improvement, close session documents, the sanctity and the, you know, confidentiality. So some work, some work to do around that, develop some protocols. And then presentations, and this is not a slide at all, but remembering, like, trying to think big picture in some senses. Remembering who the audience is, with the right amount of detail, like, and, you know, noting ad speak. You know, sometimes there's, there's ad speak. But realizing that these are works in progress and that this is, it's hard. It's really hard to summarize this data well for a variety of audiences with different experiences and understand.
That's perfect, thank you. I wrote those down. For our group, it was clerk Smith Folds. Rosa, gosh, Ms. Cornejo, sorry, I forget. Ms. Cornejo. Yes, yes, for the public, we just usually call them by the first name. So I apologize. And clerk Smith Folds was going to report out for it.
So we actually had a lot of the same thing that your group had. So I'll just reiterate it. We had the facilitation of the meetings was going very well, and that includes starting on time, ending on time, and the flow of the meeting. It's not as, it's not as tense. Like, the meeting itself, kind of the temperature has come down, which is really good. We also mentioned that overall, we believe staff presentations are doing well, like, keeping within the time limit, and that's one of the success indicators. It's keeping in the time, the time limit. So we believe that they are keeping inside the time limit, which is a good thing. For our points of growth, we are talking about consistency. Consistency is a point of growth that we all need to work on. And that's consistency with asked and questions, consistency with our comments and within the time limit of comments. And we talked about that participation is key. Participating in all of the meetings, participating in the one-on-ones, participating in being prepared for our closed session, our open session. So participation and preparedness are points of growth that we talked about in our group. I'm complete.
Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you, everybody, for engaging in that. We can go to the next slide. So we wanted to pose two questions for the board. One, during board meetings, what's expected of us as board members? And then two, what's expected of staff? And these, these questions are kind of the theme for the rest of the slides. So you don't have to answer this now, but as we go into the next sections, you know, continue to think, what's expected of us, what's expected of our staff as, as, as we go into different areas, you can go to the next. So first, we want to talk about responding to questions on the agenda, which is a big part of us being prepared for the meetings. So questions for the superintendent, one-on-one meetings with staff, and then sending questions 48 hours in advance. These are kind of norms that we have prepared in the past. Questions of the superintendent. We have talked in agenda setting that staff really wants to make sure that they are prepared for the meetings. And this includes responding to all of your questions, all of our questions. Some of us ask more questions than others before the meeting, but they have committed to answering them. But they have asked if we could send them at least 48 hours in advance when possible, which part of their commitment is that they are going to send us, to your point, trustee Reckler, all the documents that we are, that we need that Friday, so that we can at least have the weekend to really think about what questions that we have on each item. So the question I want to pose to all of you, do you all feel like 48 hours gives us enough time to prepare? This is in addition to the one-on-one meetings, right? So the one-on-one meetings are scheduled before the board meetings where we can ask questions, and we'll talk about the one-on-one meetings in a minute. On top of that, would 48 hours give us enough time for the creation of the questions? Trustee Reckler?
So I try to send everything Sunday by 10 o'clock PM. So I don't know if that works. I haven't heard, I haven't heard, I haven't heard it does it.
Because what we do is when we get those questions, we immediately disperse them off the staff, and they're starting to work on those questions right away. So typically, by the time we get to the one-on-one, most of those questions are answered.
Thank you.
Great, okay. And then as we're, as I'm posting these questions, really, as you all can tell, it's also commitments from us and commitments from staff, right? That that's kind of what we're going to do. If you have any issues, please, this is the time to raise it so we can have all the discussion. So let's talk about one-on-ones for a minute, if you can go to the next slide. So for the one-on-ones that staff prioritizes, these are not easy for staff to prioritize, right? I mean, it's, it's five of us, right? They got to ensure that they are taking that time, it's usually at least an hour. Some of us sometimes take more than an hour because we have a lot of questions or comments. So it's important that we also prioritize them. So part of the commitment that I'm going to ask for the board today is that we commit to doing them. I think that the four of us don't usually have an issue with that, but part of commitment is also knowing what you all are experiencing in your work life, in your daily life, right? So staff wants to take that in consideration as we move forward. But some of the norms that I wanted to discuss for today in the one-on-ones is how the one-on-ones are created, right? So one, that we come prepared with questions for those one-on-one meetings. And then it gives us, obviously, the ability to hear from staff directly about all the items that are agendas. If staff is unable to answer questions in the one-on-ones, they have committed that they'll follow up directly with us. And this also includes closed session items, right? So part of the commitment is that we're obviously respectful of staff's times, and that they are respectful of our time as well, right? One of the expectations from Dr. Hurst's covenant is that they are present at our one-on-one meetings, right? And then, of course, that we are focused on efficiency because the one hour that they schedule is truly all the time that they really have, right? So they can continue to focus on the areas of, of our schools need. So I wanted to open it up for discussion. Is there something that you all feel like is missing of the one-on-ones that we can ask staff to prepare? Or, or do you feel like the one-on-ones are not helpful? Do we want to change them in any way? I just wanted to open up for discussion. Because this will help us be more efficient at the work, right? So all this to prepare us. So, Dr. Hurst, do you have a comment or question?
I do have a comment about this.
Please.
So, so I know that staff has been thinking about just the one-on-ones, and it is an opportunity for us to answer all of your questions, but we know that there's so much that's happening also in the district that we have to balance, like, how do we get the information to you? So something for you to consider in your discussion is, do you feel like we need to extend that time to, from an hour to an hour and a half and have, like, certain items? Like, typically, there's questions around facilities, like, what's happening with Richmond Kennedy? What's happening with STEED? What's happening with No Middle and West County? So sometimes Rosa and I, I'll tell her, I said, I think we need to extend this one-on-one session because there's a lot to, to. So if you could, in your discussion, just think about the, the format and just some of the things that you would like to hear when we're in those sessions. Because we want to make sure that we equip you with as much information that's happening as possible.
So let's open it up. Any thoughts, comments about what Dr. Hurst just said or what I said?
I think that it's important that everyone attends a one-on-one. There needs to be some kind of board-to-board, board member-to-board member accountability when that doesn't happen, because it slows everything down, right? We have to be, well, it slows everything down, and it's not considered a staff's time because you have this time blocked out for each board member's one-on-one. So when a board member doesn't come to the one-on-one, it messes with your staff's timeline and it messes with the Wednesday's efficiency, right? Because there's a lot of things, it's the same thing about closed session, you got to show up. It's the same thing about, you know, the one-on-ones, you have to show up. That's part of what the group that we were talking about before, about being prepared and participating. So we need to talk, in my opinion, as a board, what do we do when we're not having board members who are committed to what we are saying needs to add to the efficiency of the board, right? I think that the one-on-ones work well. As a clerk, I enjoy the one-on-ones. When I was a board member, I enjoyed the one-on-ones because it gave me an opportunity to ask those questions. One of the things that I think that the staff is done better at is making sure that the one-on-one information matches the information we get on Wednesday. That we're not getting, you know, a half presentation and then not getting the all that we see on Wednesday night. So I think that's a good thing that the staff do. And I'm getting all of the information at the one-on-one. I'm asking my questions, and then I see it, either the questions are being answered by Wednesday or you know what I'm going to ask on Wednesday. So I think that that's a benefit. But I would like to take some time to discuss as a board, and I think the retreat is the place to do it. What do we do? Are we asking board members, are you going to do your one-on-one? There's an expectation for you to do your one-on-one. This is what happens if we don't do our one-on-one, right? Or, because there has to be a consequence. There has to be a consequence if we're all agreeing to something. And if we're all choosing that this is the way the board is going to be the best version of itself. So I'm complete, present, because also that's just something that I really want to see if we can talk about, tackle, or get to an understanding.
Yeah, and I think that there's going to be space to talk about standards and accountability of one another. But I'd be happy to respond in a minute. Thoughts, trustee Reckler, trustee Christian, on one-on-ones?
So I don't know what your perspective is. With my, from my perspective, it's fine. I try to agree, I try to free up the staff. So if I have one facilities question, I prioritize that, and you're out of here. You don't need to sit around and listen to the rest of my garbage. You know, I mean, it's just like, I'm trying to free people up and get the information that I need. I also have been very clear, I don't need written answers back. On stuff, like, a lot of the stuff that I presented is, I feel like it's fair game. Like, I could ask you about this, but it's more like, push the envelope of the thinking in a lot of ways. So I'm kind of like, I feel like, all right, here, it's going to be an open test. This is everything, it's going to be on a test. But I don't need you to send me any answers on this, you just better be thinking about it. It's kind of the way that I, I, I feel. As far as commitments to each other, other people work. I don't know if it's possible, you can ask somebody to show up, but if they can't, then the mechanism is going to be, you're going to get X amount of time at a board meeting, and you can use it in whatever way you want. And if, you know, you want to ask questions that are more basic, then I guess that's your right. I mean, I don't know how else to control that. For example, this week, I can do no one-on-ones. Cannot guarantee my performance on Wednesday in terms of my deepest thinking, but I just can't do it this week, so.
Trustee Christian, and then I'll come up first. Before you answer, because I want to hear if that's the one I'm going to say too. I think that, I agree with what both of you shared, and I think that it is, it is a hard conversation about how to hold on another accountable, to be prepared. So, I mean, I agree, there's, there's surely no mechanism, right, for us to be like, you know, you get less points. I mean, it's just, I think, public realizing or seeing, maybe a board member's not prepared. I think that one of the things, though, that I want to come out of today, though, is that if at least majority of us commit to doing this work, to be as efficient and as prepared as possible as board president, I can push back when there are requests. For example, this last board meeting, there were three requests that if everybody could have attended one-on-ones, there wouldn't have been requests, right? For example, you know, there was a request of an agenda item that was at the, was actually an action item or a discussion item at the, at the meeting before, right? So I don't, I'm not saying I'm going to call individuals out, being like, you're wrong, right? Like, but I'll be, in my respectful way, push back and say, like, you know, like, that has been discussed, or, or, you know, maybe you go to your one-on-one, that can be asked, right? Because we do want to be, with the amount of work that we saw that Dr. Hurst is planning with his staff, we do want to, we do have to be, we have to be as efficient as possible, right? So I think, I guess that's my, that's my goal out of today, is that we can create this commitment so that I can respectfully push back when necessary. But I understand your point. I mean, like, I think that all of us work, right, in different capacities, and it's, it's hard, right? But I think that when it's consistent, when, when certain individuals aren't prepared, right, it makes it harder.
But I think that that's some of the things that we need to be clear about. We all knew we worked when we signed up to run. This is an elected position, so we all knew we had to balance management figure out. If you're consistently missing your one-on-ones and you're not talking to the district about, hey, can I change the time? Hey, can I change the date? Hey, can I do the X, Y, and Z? My assumption is that that means you just don't want to show up. There has to be a level of responsibility and accountability, because we all work. We all know that we work. I, I take my one-on-ones on Zoom sometime because I'm driving home because I have kids and I'm picking up. Sometimes I'll take my one-on-one and I'll have the camera, I'll be like, yeah, I'm cooking, I'm doing this. But that's a responsibility that we all took on, when we chose this elected position, when we chose to run for the board. That doesn't mean we get to waste your staff's time. And it doesn't mean that we then turn around and mess with the efficiency of the board meeting that we all know happens on Wednesday nights every other week. We have to hold ourselves to the level of responsibility that we took on when we said, please elect me to the school board. And that means going to these meetings too. I know that we don't have a, we can't slack hands. There's no punitive thing that could happen. But it is an understanding that we are letting, we were a team. When we go to those one-on-ones, it's a part of helping the team. When we go to the meetings and we participate in meetings like this, it's part of helping the team. So we have to be able to be, you know, responsible to one another in a way. I'm complete.
Dr. Hurst, you can have the last word on us.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we really take the responsibilities seriously about getting you information. And we have been considering, you know, how can we reconstruct the one-on-ones to give you information? There's a lot happening in our district. Sometimes we miss information, the, I mean, the whole DLI conversation is a perfect conversation. So we have to think about these opportunities. Because our schedules are impacted, we have to maximize the time that we have. So if we could consider looking at whether it's an hour or an hour and a half, that's something that I want to, you know, have a conversation with the board. Because then, if it's an hour and a half, we can go through the agenda in 45 minutes and then have another 45 minutes to cover specific topics. Because a lot of stuff is happening around facilities, things are happening around DLI, things are happening around, I mean, you name it.
Yeah.
So you mean that other time you go deeper into one particular topic?
Yeah, and it, and it may not be on the agenda. So the specific amount of time set for agenda, and typically, we can go through the agenda in about 45 minutes and then have another 45 minutes to just go over other operating. and then have another 45 minutes to just go over other operational or instructional issues that's happening across the district just to give you updates.
Oh, why don't, why don't we pose a question? How does, how does everybody feel, an hour or an hour and a half? We can go around, and you can even tailor it, the individual, right, if someone wants an hour and a half, so. Clarence Smith, how do you feel?
Since we do ours together, we have to, I would follow your lead, right? So we do ours, and I like the idea of giving updates. I like the idea of being able to ask deeper questions, but we are, we are allowed to do them because we have the grace and the space, because we do ours and do that. So I'm fine.
Trustee Reckler, how do you feel about your one-on-one or two-on-one?
Yeah, it's, it's fine. There needs to be a readjustment where agenda gets cut to 45 and 15 minutes for district, they love my district updates, because I'm like, yeah.
Yes, yeah, ripped it up right in front of, yes, absolutely.
But an hour will work for you.
So an hour will work for you, just kind of 45 minutes and 15 minutes of updates.
Or you want, you wanna try it and see if it works?
Okay.
Trustee Christian, how do you feel?
Same thing.
Yeah, try it and see how it works.
Okay.
Sounds like everybody's okay with an hour. I'm okay with an hour too.
An hour, and so just kinda divide that up, 45 minutes, 15, okay.
Although, for us in agenda setting, I mean, it just depends, right?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, so for agenda setting, I would, I would say an hour and 15, which has been actually kind of the norm.
About an hour and 15 minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. Hour and 15 minutes for agenda setting. Hour. Got it, trustees.
Great. You can go to the next slide, thank you. So one of the things I wanted to discuss was just, something we actually haven't talked in a while, which is the requests for agenda items and follow-through. And these are just a couple of things that I wanna establish. So any of you can add things to the agenda, right? You can make the request. So the, the way that it works is that once you make the request to myself, the board clerk, and superintendent, then the agenda setting team goes through all the requests and then looks at the governance calendar and then management timeline and items that are of urgency, right? And then we see how long each board meeting will be, right? And then after that, we determine when we can have that item come to the board, right? But of course, it's situational, so each item might be more urgent, others less, right? So one of the things that I would really like to all of you to ask is your preference of when you would like for it to come back? That does not mean that I can 100%, you know, stick to that, right, because of the items that are coming. But, you know, one of the things that I am committing is that we'll put it on the agenda, right? When it comes to the agenda, that's what we'll determine. And I will follow up with all of you after each agenda setting, let you know when it will come, just so that you get an update. So any questions or comments on this section? Anything that you like see a little different? I know it hasn't, we haven't really had time to experience this process since, you know, the new leadership took over very much. But this is kind of what my goal, what I hope it will be.
I like the idea that you're gonna be follow-up with the person who sent agenda item requests, whether that's other trustees or community or whatever. It's gonna be a two-way communication. It doesn't just kinda, you send the request and then it doesn't go anywhere. You don't know where it's going because you're committed to following up with people. I think it allows for, it allows for transparency and it allows for board members and the community to know, okay, this is on the radar. This is when I think it can come back, because I've talked to superintendent, I've looked at the governance calendar. This is where we'll have the room to keep the efficiency of the board, the board meetings working seamlessly. So I think that's a good thing. Thank you.
Trustee Reckler?
Okay, so I don't know this for sure, but I have the feeling that I probably don't hand in a lot of agenda requests. I don't know, because I don't talk to anybody, but I don't think you're, I don't think I've handed in, you know, like. Probably on the low side. I know recently I put in a couple of deep topics, and I don't expect them to come back soon because I know that's deep and complex work. I guess it would be good to know that the request was received. Because I'm not sure that's always happened in that, you know, like maybe a timeframe. And I think what would be helpful is if we all agree on, it's actually in the bylaws that we're supposed to improve a governance calendar when we do our organization. So if we knew, you know, like, this is data log. If we knew that this is when all the budgeting came, if we knew that this, like, if we had a sense of the world, this is where them rad comes, this is what, like, if we had a sense of when all that stuff came, it might help everybody be more realistic and when to take on deep work, because that climate change thing, you know, that's a deep project. That's probably like a strategy rather than just an agenda item. So it's, so I, so I think that might help.
Yeah. No, that's a really good point. And I think that the governance calendar that Dr. Hersch presented earlier in close helps, it's not as detailed as what you're probably asking, but I think that it probably helps a little bit to frame it. So I think that if we use that and then we can think about what other details we can add to that. Yeah.
Absolutely.
But I did write your request. I, I do like the request of at least acknowledging that it's been received. And definitely the timeframe, that's definitely something we can do.
Yeah, I think that would be, and you're gonna know, some are easy and some are, you know, deep work items that are not.
Not gonna happen overnight, yeah.
And I'll always, I will be built on, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'll come back, I'll come back to you. I just wanna make sure that we go to Trustee Christian and then, and then we'll come back to each other. Okay, go ahead.
So I think it all builds on itself, right? So the more we go to our one-on-ones, ask for questions, get everything taken care of, the faster the meetings happen. The faster the meetings happen, the more agenda items can be put on there, right? The more discussion or action items that can be on there, and we can kind of do these deeper dollars. So they build on each other. So I think that that's one of the things that if we all keep that in mind, then our agenda items will get on the agenda faster because we're getting into a rhythm and a flow. We know that this is an agenda item that's important to trustee X. So we're gonna put in a new session, it may take a little longer, but look how we're doing consent. We're like running through consent. Look how we're running through the action items, because our questions are getting answered. Look how efficient the superintendent reports, because we're doing X, Y, and Z. So if we do a little, we get a lot. So if we do a little by going to our agenda or our one-on-one, we'll end up getting a lot of time back, which means we can get our agenda items on the agenda faster. I'm free.
Thank you. Okay, you can go to the next. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about closed session. So in my email that I sent you all beginning of the school of the year, I mentioned how I went back and I looked at our starting times for closed session last year. And the average was actually four o'clock, four, four-thirty. And, and we look at a lot of stuff in closed session, right? So not to decrease the importance of what we do, because it's really important, but there's been, I think, a couple of things that have created this. One is that we were getting a lot of information pretty late, right? The day of the board meetings, staff has now committed to send us that information on Fridays, right? Everything we'll need for closed session. Two, when we're looking at student discipline issues, Director Smith has committed to reaching out to us outside of the one-on-ones to talk about the disciplinary issues to answer our questions, which have been in the past pretty lengthy in our closed sessions. And then, you know, I want to, one of my goals is to honor the five o'clock timeline because I, I've heard from some of you, but for me, it really affects my work day, to have to constantly change that. So, so I want to commit to five o'clock. There are times that unfortunately, we're, we're not gonna be able to follow that, right? Because of just the nature of what's happening, but our goal is to do that. So what I wanted to ask here is what else could we be doing in close, for preparing for closed session? Or a closed session to make us more efficient and timely? I felt like the last closed session was actually a really good example of making, making progress, right, the last two, actually. So anything else that you all feel like you need to be prepared, to be efficient, right? Apart from getting the information ahead of time? Clarence Smith?
That was the main thing for me, is getting that information ahead of time and being able to have access to ask questions specifically about students in that part, I think is good. But again, I use my one-on-one time to ask some of the questions about closed session if I need more information, because the people are there in our one-on-one to answer that too, right? I do like having the paper in front of me so I can read it again, refresh myself again before the meeting. But I like the idea of clothes starting at five. I think it's just, it, it's respectful to the people who do work. It's respectful to the people who have to get dinner or do kids or whatever, you know. It's respectful to travel time, so some of the board members are traveling from Oakland or Sacramento or whatever to get to the closed session. So I like everything that's set up now, so I, I find a value in the closed session, the way we're doing it now.
You brought up a good point that I didn't mention, which is that also staff has now committed to going over closed session in our one-on-ones, which I don't know what your experience has been, but in my one-on-ones, that wasn't the case. We would jump straight into open, open session items, so now that's another added layer to answer, to answer questions. So, so that's one more piece. Trustee Reckler, anything, any feedback, thoughts about closed session?
So do you think it's helpful to get the basic understandings out of, as much of the basic understandings? Like, I feel like we spent a lot of time just being like, what is this meeting?
That's true.
And also, you know, and that it's important, it's really important, but it takes a long time, like especially some of the, you know, some of the legal landscape. It is what it is, very complicated. So as much of that can get cleared as safely and as confidentially as, as possible, because I get, I, you know, like, I don't know, I just, I just wanna really carefully control that data, you know, there's more.
Yeah.
Preview. Just the same thing with those discussions.
And to your point, that's why Director Smith is calling us instead of sending us like a written report, right? Because of the confidentiality of students, so absolutely. So if you have more suggestions around that, I think that that'd be helpful.
So that we can have, you know, so if, if all of that pre-work can then get cleared and then we can like talk about, so I would just say, try to concentrate on pre-work, you know, to, to, to clear the, some of the, you know, the rocky landscape, you know, to level set the rocky landscape so that we can then like, you know, like have a.
End that discussion.
To have the discussion rather than like, okay, now let me read back to you exactly what you told me to make sure that I understand. So, that's it.
Trustee Christian, then we'll go to Dr. Hersch. Any anything else that you think would make it more efficient in closed session?
Pretty much, we don't, you know, we cover quite a bit, so.
Clarence, before you go to Richmond and Hersch, did you see Dr. Lovely's fan, fan?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at the screen. Dr. Lovely, I'll go to you in one second. We'll go to Dr. Hersch and then we'll go to you. Sorry about that. I'll ask Dr. Hersch to look for you as I move forward.
Yeah, so I, so I've had the conversation with legal counsel about documents as well. And I mentioned this in our, our group, or actually Trustee Reckler did, that really we shouldn't be providing any electronic documentation to board members, that everything should be handed out hard copy and then retrieved as well. However, I do like the idea of really, like, making sure that you're informed before you get to the meeting. I know that's really good for board members, so we can come prepared to the one-on-ones, making sure that we go into detail. And having LaShante call ahead of time, because she can always be in the one-on-ones as well. I think another thing that Rosa and I had talked about, she had mentioned, and Trustee Reckler too, about unsharing documents. So if we do decide to share a document, we can unshare that document as well, so.
That's a great idea. I think that usually it's three people who bring us confidential information, apart from our lawyers, Ms. Smith, Dr. McIntyre, and Mr. Tenes, Tenes and Chuck, right? So as long as those three individuals are coming to our one-on-ones, prepared to talk about closed session.
Gotcha.
Or follow up with each one of us, I think that will help us be prepared. If it has to be a lawyer, then unfortunately, we're gonna have to wait to close session, right? Because we're not gonna pay a lawyer to call us all individually and then go to closed session, so, to be efficient. But I think, Dr. Lovely, did you have something you would like to add?
I, I just had a question or a thought. I don't know if the board wants to, or we've already discussed it, but you're committed to the starting time at five and the time certain, what about the ending time? Because I know your closed session ends at a certain time and generally goes into open session, where you often have members of the public or employees or students there waiting. So I just wasn't sure if there was a commitment on the ending time. And if you don't finish coming back into closed session, is that something you wanna discuss?
Thank you, Dr. Lovely. It's not something I prepared for, but yeah, we should discuss it. I think that we have, recently, what we've been doing, I mean, we've been ending on time, which is great. But what we were doing is that we would extend, which we have heard from the public, is pretty frustrating, right? So my recommendation is that we start implementing six-thirty and coming back after open session. But what do you think about that? Clarence Smith, what's your move on?
So for me, I'd rather keep our time commitment to the public. Six-thirty, we're out there and we're starting. I'd rather keep that time commitment and then us have to come back and do the rest of the work than us keep extending. Because I get more feedback from the public about, is it really six-thirty today? Or is it gonna be seven fifteen? Or is it gonna be eight fifteen? It's gonna be, so. And I get that once we're in the conversation in closed session, like, we're really in, like, we're in it, we're talking, we're arguing, we're trying to come to consensus, to some consensus, like, we're really doing the work. But that's a time management issue on our part. We need to be able to do the work, do it quickly, do it with depth. And if we can't, then we don't need to punish the public, we need to come back and kind of, in a sense, punish ourselves, right? So, but knowing that when we come back, we're also, people still have to stay. So the CSS is still, we're gonna be there, the custodian staff's still gonna be there, some of the district staffs are still gonna be there. So even coming back is not something that we need to do every time. It needs to be, okay, it was an emergency, we have to come back and we're gonna use it sparingly and not as a crunch. So again, my opinion on it is start at six-thirty. No matter what we have to do, we need to start at six-thirty. And then we need to implement coming back only if necessary, only if we have to. So that's my opinion on that direction.
Trustee Reckler, how do you feel?
Coming back after closed session should be infrequent and only when.
Absolutely.
Absolutely necessary.
Trustee Christian?
Coming back at the closed session? I say, no.
Yeah? Uh, sorry.
I mean, just one other thing on that. I, I cannot function the next day after a late night. I, I'm at the point where I'm like, I can't, I just cannot, I need, I can't do it. So I, I can't imagine what people who need to release their children, you know, it's just, after a while, it just becomes unsustainable.
Dr. Hersch?
I agree that it should be infrequent. I, I think it should rarely happen, because that's the purpose of the agenda setting and the one-on-ones. And if we've done our job in adequately preparing all of you for, like, here's what's coming, you should have all your questions, or most of your questions, answered. you should have all your questions and most of your questions answered, sure it should go smoothly. And especially, we should be planning, in my opinion, with you two, those agenda settings and those closed sessions, so that that doesn't happen. Yeah.
Uh, I, I like that. I, I agree with all of you. I think that, um, one of my goals as your board president is, one, not to start meetings before five, and end them at ten-thirty, out of respect to staff, out of respect to each other, um, because we already have a lot of meetings, right? So I agree with everything you, you've all said. Um, I mean, I think that there are boards that meet once a month, right? So listen, if they can do it, we can do it, right? I'm not saying let's move to once a month. I saw some eyes like lit up. But since we have to sometimes do more, right, with study sessions, um, we have to stick to our plan, right? And we have to stick to our, to our dates. Um, so, so I agree with all of you, okay, let's do that. If in the weird and unusual circumstances where we have to go past six-thirty in closed session, we'll come back, uh, but again, it'll be frequent, right? Okay, you can go to the next slide.
Thank you. I, I was still stuck on.
Dreaming, one. Okay, a few procedures, a few procedures I want to touch on. Um, so a few of the things that we have just established, it's one, the, 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 um, the procedure of, if there are no objections, we, we accept and pass that item, right? So that's new, one, it helps us be more efficient. It was at the suggestion of the parliamentarian, so it does follow our, our, uh, Rustin Burgess rules, which is great. Um, so if it's okay with you, that's something I would like to continue doing, because I do think that it's actually making it so a little bit faster than having to go through every single name every time. Um, what I don't want to do though is use it for this, for action items. That is the only time that I do want to have, uh, motions and votes, just because, um, I do think that sometimes, uh, I am unsure on where people stand, so, uh, it's just a thing cleaner, but I wanted to put it as a discussion, like, how do we feel about that? Look, actually, do we want to do the, you know, objection? I mean, I'm happy to do so, um, but, uh, but I wasn't sure how you felt, which is why I hadn't done it before. Um, so I'll go around and see if anyone has any thoughts on that. I keep starting, do you want me to switch you around?
It's a easy start.
Okay, okay.
It's easy to do.
Go ahead.
I think that, um, using, you know, is there any objections in certain cases is good. I do like to forecast our votes out on some things because it gives the student trustees participation part in it, and it helps them learn the governance of it all and how it works. Um, so when we're doing an action item, like, you know, call for the vote, right? I think that that's okay to call for the vote when we're doing that. When you're doing the agenda approval in minutes, you're free, just no objections. Like, anybody got to, you know, that kind of moves it again, it's moving the agenda faster when you have that option to do no objection and just passing an item. But I like to make sure that they have some, um, participation semblance of governance when they do that, because I think it, it gives them kind of like to sit up straight and it gives us an opportunity for the community to hear where we stand on something. So it also holds us accountable, because if we're not listening to our community, they hear it. And then they can come and give us feedback as their trustees. Well, wait a minute, we, you know, we went to your community meeting and we sent you emails about this and we did this and we were expecting this from you and we didn't get it, so we would like you to like listen to us and, because our, we vote, our values and our vote, right? And also our commitment to our community is in our vote and how we work together as a team, so some things I think need to be passed out for the community to know where their board and their board members stand. I'm complete.
Thank you. Um, trustee Reckler, thoughts?
So I don't know the answers to these things. Tammy might know some. Uh, first, I think it is good practice for the students, so I, I think that's a great idea, I didn't think of that. But what I did think of is that under the governor, the governor's executive order and under the Brown Act, with this teleconferencing, like, I don't know if it's an exec- I don't really know where we are, but I think if you teleconference, that there actually does have to be a roll call vote. So I don't know where, where that is with the, with the executive order, you know, there's some, just a little legal stuff. But for, for action items, my preference would be to continue on with a roll call vote, it just makes it really clean. They can capture it, students get practice, um, consent, eh, minutes, eh?
Okay. Um, could you follow with Harold on that question?
How about that, Ben?
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, let us know, that's a good question, no.
That was a good question.
We've been doing a really good job, I mean, I think, you know.
Yeah.
We've been, we've been really good, so.
But you're good at narrating too. Like, you're good at narrating what just happened. Okay, so there's, and you, you can see your head moving, okay, so there's no, there's no objections and you pause and you do, so you do a really good job at narrating, so I don't think that there's an issue, but I would like to hear what legal said about it, but.
Trustee Christian?
Yeah, good, 'cause, I mean, you, you right to the point, boom. You know, so it's the floor, everything is moved.
Great. So you're okay with continuing that practice? Okay. And you okay?
Yes, I'm definitely okay. Uh, we were actually talking about, you know, your process, you know, the objections. I was wondering if it was parliamentarian correct, but you checked with her and it is, so. We like it.
Oh, great.
It's more efficient, and I really like what you said as well about the action items and student trustees, I hadn't thought about that.
Okay, we'll continue to do that then. Action items, we'll continue to do a roll call about, for everything else, we'll do the objection. Uh, okay, public comment obviously is starting at this next meeting, so we're gonna do a check-in in April to see how it's going. Uh, new seating arrangement, uh, any feedback? We don't have to go one by one. Um, are, is there any feedback on changes you would like to see of the new seating arrangement? Um, I think I already see trustee Reckler, you have some.
No, I'm so happy I can hear.
Oh, great.
I mean, the sound is.
Much better.
Mm-hmm.
Me too. Me too. Yeah. Anything that you would like to see different?
No, it's, it's the way it's set up right now, it's cool.
Yeah.
I was just saying, I know that you and I have talked before and we have as well, just about staff.
Oh, yeah.
So we.
Do they not like it?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about seating assignments. So we make sure that certain people cannot sit by certain people.
Yeah, yeah.
Because. We, we have to have a seating chart for them.
We do.
We do.
Well, I think, I think that is completely appropriate and I, and I think that's for you to.
Yes.
I think that's your purview and I think that's totally.
So President Gonzalez, I do have a question. Is it, would you like trustee Christian either switch and see the liaison to the students or am I okay sitting there?
I think that you guys should discuss that.
If you want to switch, you can, if not, I'm okay.
It's whatever you want.
Okay, so I can stay there because I'm okay kind of like guiding them if they need it, but you're okay with me saying, okay, this is where we are? Because they'll ask me a question and I'm okay with doing it. I just don't want to step on your toes, because you're their liaison.
Yeah, that's, that's true too.
Okay.
Yeah, um.
If you ever want to switch, we'll switch, okay?
Yeah.
So what if we put one of you guys in each hand and put the students between both of you?
Oh, look at you.
That makes sense.
There, there you go.
But, okay, I want to be in the middle, I don't want to be on you.
Yeah, that makes sense.
You know what I mean? Like, if it's like, it's President Gonzalez, it's, um, Dr. Hurst, student, me.
I think the idea was you. You, students, and, and trustee Christian.
Oh.
They're sandwiched between you.
Yeah. You stand.
Christian at the end.
Okay.
And you next to Dr. Hurst, and the students.
Gotta stay next to me. Keep me, you keep me on my toes now.
Right, oh, yeah.
Keep me on my toes.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
That sounds actually a good, a good suggestion, thank you, Rosette. Um, and then, you know, we're continuing our number of questions and next of comments. I just wanted to make it clear that, um, so far, I think I've had at every meeting someone request more time for something, right? So that is something you want to continue, like, the norm will be three questions, one-minute comments, but then on big items, right? Um, we have, we're gonna extend that, but then if you all feel like you want more, uh, that's something I'm happy to accommodate. So just let me, let me know, right? Now, what I think that I don't want to be accommodating is if people are not prepared, right? So I do think, I do want to start making that clear. Um, uh, now like, if I hear, like, people are not sharing up to one-on-ones, right? And, and then they're constantly requesting more questions, I think that I will respectfully say, you know, we're sticking to this, right?
I think that's a consequence to what we as a board have agreed to do. We, we as a board have agreed to go to one-on-one.
Right.
So as a board, when we go to our one-on-ones, that gives us the, um, kind of the opportunity to ask those questions to where you can narrow it down to three. The other, three or four, the other thing I like about what you do is that you say, hey, if you need more, let me know, right? I'm okay with needing more. I also think one of the things that is gonna be beneficial is when we have that public comment, our questions are gonna get answered, or we're gonna at least hear them, or we're gonna be able to tailor them more to where it is just two, three, or, or comments can include that too. So I think having more voices at the table is gonna be better and it's gonna lessen the amount that we have to talk, right? Or the questions that we have to ask, because staff is now hearing what the public wants. We are now hearing what the public wants, and we're gonna turn around and frame it into a question, or we can put it as a comment. So I think that's good. Um.
Trustee Christian, hold on, before you go, um, you can't step outside until.
Yeah, we have to have.
Trustee Reckler comes back. Sorry, because of quorum.
Yeah, we have to stop the whole thing.
As soon as she comes back, you're welcome.
You know, it's like school free, everybody can't go out to. Okay, so I'm complete with my comment.
Okay. Um, you can move to our next slide, sir. Okay, um, okay, so I'm gonna wait for trustee Reckler to come back to have this discussion. Um, so, um, why don't we take a five-minute break? Because I think that everybody kind of needs one, so before we, I mean, there's only two slides left, but let's take a five-minute public. Uh, we apologize because we've been sitting here for so long. Uh, so we're gonna take five minutes, we'll be back at one-twenty-six, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, everybody, we're back. Um, okay, so this is the second to last, uh, slide. Um, so two areas that I did want to talk about, which have been brought up to me by the public and, and some of you, is one, and this is, both, uh, these areas are things that I think we've all done at one point, so it's not pointed at anybody. Um, but, um, one, conversations and communication during board meetings with each other, with staff. Um, a couple of examples, right? Uh, some of us stood up and gone to talk to staff and ask questions while someone's presenting or talking, um, or we turn to each other, right? Um, and, and, uh, we have had members of the public doing this up a few times. Um, it's happened with the parliamentarian a few times, which has caused me to be distracted. Uh, so I just wanted us to have a conversation about what is our expectation about holding conversations? Um, like, I don't think that, you know, we can hold each other kind of like, don't speak, don't, right, right? Not at all, but like, um, if we can, one, I think that if we have a conversation, right? I would prefer if we take it away from the stage, right? Um, I mean, and, and away from the camera, right? Because it's, it can be very distracting. Um, and then two, if you have a question to staff, um, you know, they all have their computer, I think that you can send it to them, right? Uh, so those are my two recommendations to bring down that, that, uh, uh, this area that has been an issue. Uh, but I wanna, I wanna hear everybody's thoughts, uh, on this. Um, and then, you know, we can commit to maybe a procedure that we wanna establish. The second question, which we can take, tackle one, each one individually, the second one is, how do we hold staff accountable to areas where we care about and, and, and maybe are not getting done or are getting done, but I mean, not to the idea that, that we think it should be done, and, and how do we do it in a respectful way in both an open session and closed session, right? Because I do think that one, and I think this is gonna go into our next discussion a little bit, and, and by law, ninety oh five, is we're examples to the community, right? And I think that one of the things that we have discussed is that there is national, right? Uh, a trend of, uh, of talking disrespectfully, right? Um, I have fallen into that at times, we're heated at times, right, of, of, of strong discussion um, with one another, with staff, but how do we diminish that so that we are examples to what discourse should look like in our community? Um, uh, so that's the other piece that I want to put out there. Why don't we tackle the first one, though? Uh, conversations during board meeting. Um, uh, anyone would like to start? I don't want you to just call on Clark Smith first.
So.
You're ready.
So there's a couple of things. When I was on Zoom watching the board meeting, it was incredibly distracting because you could just see it, like you would see someone back up off camera and do this, and you didn't know what they were saying, which also I think is, i- if it's not a violation of it, if it's a violation of the spirit of we're transparent, we're open, everybody's participating in the meeting, right? So I couldn't hear what anyone was saying because I was on Zoom, right? At the actual board meeting, I see why it's happening, but it's still a distraction that it's happening, right? So for me, one of the things is, we just stop doing it. Here's the caveat to that. If I have a student next to me who's asking me a procedural question, then I want to be able to answer her to say, this is where we are, because it is, it's a teachable moment, they're new to it. I think that that will diminish the longer they're on the board, but in those first couple of months, they do need to know, because we're just still continuing, right? They have a small orientation, but an orientation is different than being right there in it when it's happening, right? And sometimes we go very fast. There's one motion, then there's another motion, then we're voting on the second motion or the first motion, so I don't know how to do that except to know that, you know, President Hoy, Gonzalez Hoy, if I'm talking, I'm talking to them, guiding them, right? It's not a kiki moment or, you know, something like that, it's like, okay, this is where you are, let me help you get to where we are. Or if there's a signal that I could have to say, I'm helping a trustee, right? You know, when you were a teacher, you would have the red card and the green card, like, so, you know, I'm helping a partner or something, just so people know that's what I'm doing. I'm okay with that. But I do want to have that leeway to help them and to show them where we are or to answer questions that they may have in the moment. But I don't want to violate, you know, it's not really violating the Brown Act, but I don't want to interrupt a meeting. Um, when I, if I'm at the meeting in person and I get up and go to the restroom, I don't have the forecast up, right? I can just get up and, okay. But it's not getting up and talking to staff, it's getting up and handling personal business and coming back and sitting down, okay?
Yeah.
I'm complete with number one.
Yeah.
If you could just give some guidance around how do I help the student trustees and maintain this decorum about not being disruptive? Because I don't want them to pass a note, because that, you know.
Right.
Public records or whatever, or just for them to be able to know that you probably don't want to pass a note during a formal governance meeting.
Yeah.
But I do want to be able to lean over and be like, okay, we're here.
No, that's a really good point. Um, Rosette, can you turn on the camera? Um, trustee Reckler, thoughts? Thank you.
So I think the parliamentarian should be on camera. That's the first thing. Because you do, you hear her talking, or you, you know, like, she's feeding me, you know, like, last week she told me to move over into the microphone, but nobody could see her, so. I think that's important, and you may want to open in your remarks that we have a parliamentarian here with us, so that people know that there's another character in the play.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have to go back and look, there is actually some board bylaw around in conduct during a meeting, but I don't, I can't, I wasn't prepared for this, so I don't know exactly what it is. But we probably should, and I don't think we did, address it in the handbook.
Yeah. Hmm, I totally forgot about that, yeah.
So we should write some.
Reset that.
Stuff up, it comes with some norms about what's expected. Not talking to staff. I read somewhere in some handbook, you know, like, you're not really supposed to be with the public, you're not supposed to be having these conversations with staff.
I think it was actually one of the examples that we looked at, maybe as a committee, because I remember that, that it said specifically, you won't have conversations because it can be requested as part of like information request or whatever, it kind of like.
So the sidebar conversation is.
Yeah, like, what was discussed? I like, so I really liked your suggestions. One, I think, would you mind following up with the parliamentarian? I think that's a great, and things been brought up by the public too. Um, I'll definitely do something in my opening remarks and then. I'll definitely do something in my opening remarks, and then I do think that we should bring it up to the handbook committee. I know we're about to be done, but I think that we should add something. I agree. Trustee Christian, thoughts?
Yeah, this, you know, this basic clar, you know, like, clarification? Like, if you'd get, they get, I mean, I understand it the first time, you know, you go back and ask for clarification, can you repeat that information that way?
Making it as part of our procedures, right? Like, instead of, yeah, I like that. I like that a lot.
And I think that, to piggyback off of that, when you get ready to say we're about to take a vote, you're real good at saying, we're voting on this motion, which I think helps bring the clarity, the clarity that trustee Christian was talking about, so we all know where we are. So I think you do a really good job of that, when you're like, okay, colleagues, this is what we're about to do, we're going to take a vote on the motion that was filed, and fill in the blanks, so it gives us that kind of summary right before we take the vote. Because again, it does, it's, it's a lot, it gets, it all happens really fast, and if you're not really, really committed on it, you know, you'll forget where you are. So I think you do very well with that.
Thank you. And I think that our, our parliamentarian is also trying to help a lot of the time, right? But then she does have these side conversations, so I think that also giving her the feedback to unmute, and for her to verbally say it, right? President Gonzalez, you forgot this, right? I'm totally cool with her calling me out, right? But I think that public don't know what she leans over to tell me, right? Or tell each other, to your point about leaning closer, right? If she unmutes, it's like, oh, trustee Reckler, can you get closer to your mic? I think that, that will add a level of transparency. So like, if you could give her that feedback, I think that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's move to the second item. So how do we, how do we balance this? And we'll all fall in prey in the, in the number two, right? So how do we balance this staff accountability, each other, holding each other accountable in a respectful way, to set the example? Any thoughts? I'll just open it up. I actually don't have suggestions, except for I think it's trustee, oh no, it's trustee Christian.
Well, you can unplug me, but I'm charged.
Hey, Charles, okay. I think a lot of it is, um, we're at the point now that we're, you know, headed into three years in. So I think that forming relationships helps with staff, like staff knowing that having a relationship with trustee Smith Fols, she not going shady, that's just how she's saying it, right? So it's, but we get those relationships when we go to our one-on-ones. We get those relationships when we do our part, right? When we show up to closed session, when we show up to retreats, when we show up to these things, it allows the, the staff, the centralized staff to know us, right? So then when we come to the dais, it's like, oh, okay, that's not being shady, right? I think that as trustees, when we're sitting on the dais, it's a moment of, you always have to be professional. You always have to be respectful. You can give your point across without any other nasty that comes with it. But the assume best intentions happens when you form relationships with staff, right? Then they're going to assume best intentions, right? I think that it's, I think that it's part of us doing our job is to form those relationships. It's part of, and I know I could be better at saying the thank yous. You're very good at saying thank you. Trustee Reckler's very good at saying thank you. President Christian's very good at saying thank you. I just kind of jump in it. So I think one of the things that I could be better at is, thank you for your presentation. Thank you, staff, for your time. Thank you. And I'm not good at that, as I should be, because I just kind of want to jump in and get to dive into the deep work. But a thank you goes a long way. So from the dais, one, one of my commitments is to thanking staff for the presentation. Thank you for the hard work that you've done. So I think that that would help develop a better relationship, knowing that I am, I do see the work. I do know that it's hard doing these presentations. I would like for us to do better board feedback. I would like us to do board debriefings. Like, how was that board meeting? How did everybody feel? Was that, did everybody feel okay about that one? Or, oh no, that may have been a rough one. We had a, we don't have a chance to talk to each other and debrief each other about what we could do better about that meeting, or how we felt about that meeting and the flow of it. So I think board debriefings would be a good thing. I think that we need to be able to tell each other that that was a little harsh, right? Like, I see where you were going with that question, but that's, that was a little harsh, you know? Colleagues to colleagues, I think that that would be something that we do, because we don't, everyone feels the tension. Like, everyone, like, we all feel it, it's not like we don't feel it, it's not like the public doesn't feel it, like, we all, it's not like the staff doesn't feel it, it's not like, you know, so if we are able to communicate and just like, cut that tension in the moment, I think it would be better, right? So if someone says, if someone's like, well, no, I need you to tell me that, they're like, yo, relax. Like, they may not have that information right now, or Dr. Hurst, can you see if they can come back with that information? But we have to be able to kind of stop that as board trustees, right? Like, yo, I get what you're saying, but you're coming off a little rough. They don't, they may not have that right now. Again, if we can have those kind of relationships with each other, all of us, I think it'd be okay. Trustee, President Gonzalez, I don't know if I hit your question, but
You did, no, you did, thank you. I saw your hand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just share that I, I definitely agree. Now, I wrote down a few things I want to just kind of reiterate. One is the relationships. I think when I came on board, I shared about the importance of, like, this governance team developing a relationship and really having a retreat and being intentional. I know that, um, my board in Washington, no longer my board, but we were very intentional in having meetings like this, but also having a retreat, retreat, and we would bring like our spouses.
You mean, like, going out in the woods and doing trust exercises?
We actually, we actually, so, we actually met at one of my board members' cabin in Washington, in Idaho, actually, and it was on a really beautiful lake. And we all kind of shopped together, we went to the store together, we, we got the food that we wanted to get, and we had
It's like a budget exercise, you get a dollar, you're on.
So we, we chipped in, we all chipped in, it wasn't from the district, we all chipped in. We would buy like brisket or whatever we wanted.
And then y'all cooked in the cabin?
We all cooked in the cabin, our wives, and he had like this big cabin. But it was an opportunity for them to get to know Crystal, myself, and it was really just conversation.
But the wife?
No, 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 no. Actually, it was the board president, he was a guy, and he cooked. He cooked the breakfast, he cooked the, the dinner, everything. And it was, it was really just an opportunity for us to do something other than just talk about work. It was about getting to know one another. There's something to be said about, like, just developing that relationship. And so we've not had that opportunity since we've been a governance team. So I would like to have that opportunity and just being intentional about that. So that just gets to the piece that you were talking about, like, relationships do make a difference.
It does.
When I have a relationship, or when everyone has a relationship, and you joke around with me, but we know what that's about, but when you don't have that relationship, it's, it's just a little bit different, so. But I, I will also speak to, just like professionalism, which goes to tone to me as well. So this is going to be, I'm just use myself as an example. And I'm going to use myself as a black man. So I have to be very careful, because I have been put in this box or this category as an angry black man. I'm tall, sometimes I don't even realize, like, my height and my voice is a little deep as well. And so sometimes, when I have rise and inflection in my voice, then people will interpret that as, like, this guy, what's wrong with him? He's an angry black man, so.
No, it, it just, you, you don't like what's being said.
What I'm saying is, I, I actually have to practice.
Yeah.
I have to practice. I'm not perfect, but I have to practice on how I'm interacting with people and when I'm saying to people. Like I said, I'm not perfect, but I have to, like, watch my tone, I have to be professional in every situation.
But as a six-foot-plus black man, you have learned to keep a monotone voice.
Exactly.
That's something that I think that everybody needs to realize that. Same thing, as a black woman, it's like, if my head moves just a little bit, it's like, oh, there she go popping her neck. Like, you know what I mean? So it's one of those things that, that's that cultural competency that we have to have across the district. And it's also when you see us intentionally not moving or not speaking loud, it's, it's an intentionality. We are intentionally editing ourselves because of the reaction we may get from other people, right? So I think that that's actually a good conversation that we need to have, because we have a black and brown staff, too.
Yeah, that's right.
Right? And we have a black and brown board, so again, understanding our cultural nuances is something that we need to have a conversation about, right? My husband tells me all the time that, he was like, why are you so loud? I was like, I'm not loud, honey, I'm black, this is his, and I'm a teacher.
Right.
So it's one of those things that my voice just carries. It's just one of, and there's research done as why it carries, and then we know that there's research in classes why black students may speak louder than, like, all of the research is there, but it's a constant reminder. I'm like, husband, no, 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 this is just my tone, like, this is how I speak, right? So, and then he's learned over twenty-five years, this is, this is how he speaks, right?
I'll tell you, look at, you know, I, I just, you kind of, you know, just going back, like, frustration. You know, um, I was frustrated on a lot of, uh, the way stuff was going. And, but I just maintained, I said, you know, I never acted out of character and nothing like that, but, but I, you know, and, and, you know, deep down to me, it's like, man, I said, would she shut up?
Right, right.
No, really. You, you, you talk too much. But it was frustration. But I didn't blurt it out like that.
Because we also have to give ourselves, as black people and people of color, we have to give ourselves a reality break, too. Like, we, we get to own our feelings, too. We get to be frustrated, too, but how do we then check ourselves and be like, yo, I know you're frustrated, but that's coming off harsh, right? I know you're passionate, but that's coming off me. I know you're upset, but that's coming off accusatory, right? And that may not be what you intend, you may just be frustrated. You may just be upset, you may just be, you know, may just be in a different spot, but how do we then make sure that we let each other know that, right? And that's about
It's just like, to meet you and know how to handle, I mean, you, 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 um, this is what you do. And I had to learn it. It was, and it very, it was, it was frustrating all the way through, but I maintained.
Thank you for saying that, but I think that
I maintained.
We're all human, right? We all got to be able to know when to ask for a break, right? I think that we got to give each other that grace, right? Because we talk about very different
And you guided me through.
Right, right.
It's like, oh, shits, here we go again, but we made it. But, um, but it was a learning experience for me, too, though. And now, it's like, you know, and I see it more clearly now, because I'm not under pressure.
About being the board president is a very, that comes to that, too. It is, I think that that's, I think that that's a real truthful statement, that there's, and what we can do as your colleagues is help relieve that stress by asking for breaks when we need it, taking deep breaths, making ourselves under control, and knowing that we are speaking in public, and we have to maintain board quorum, right? We can be frustrated, but we have to maintain a degree of stability about it.
Trustee Reckler, any thoughts you'd like to add? So what I'm hearing is like, uh, speaking our truth, but in a respectful way, just ensuring that we are keeping, you know, our reactions and emotions in mind, asking for breaks if we need them, respecting those breaks if they're asked, and then also holding one another accountable, right? If we do see that we're slipping, right? I think that's totally fair. Okay, uh, let's move to the next, this is the last slide. Okay, so, I mean, this is really the commitment, right? Around everything that we've talked about through this session. Is there anything that you will feel that we have discussed that might get in the way of being able to commit to the norms that we set today, the procedures that we set today? That might get in the way? Anything that we can think about?
I think that it's a shame that we don't have all five of us here. I think, I just want to put that out there, we need to have all five of us here, but even the four that we have in the room, plus our superintendent, we need to make the commitment that we're going to do it no matter what. We have sat here, we have talked about it, we've had a board retreat, everyone's had their time to speak, and we've come to some agreements, and the agreements are, and you know, we, we have them, but we have to hold ourselves accountable to it. Even when we get back to Wednesday night, we don't need to start all over like we've never heard this. No, we've heard the commitment that we're going to speak our truth gently, we're going to take breaks and check each other when we have to. We're going to show up to our one-on-ones, we're going to ask our questions, we're going to come prepared, we're going to participate. These are all the things that we've talked about inside this retreat, and we have to hold to it outside of the retreat. We cannot just kind of start all over when we're all five together. We four, plus our superintendent, have made an agreement, so we all need to just march forward, and everybody else is going to have to catch up. I'm complete.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that the four of us participated, right? The five of us participated, I think that we can, as board president, I can hold us to the commitments accountable right at the board meeting. I think that you four can hold me accountable at the board meeting, right? And we'll go from there, right? I mean, we can't force everybody to be present, right? But as long as the majority is committed, and we are working, helping each other to hold to that, I think that's how we'll succeed, right? Any other thoughts before me, we move to the next item? Okay, thank you, everybody. I, I know we went over time, but it was, I think, very productive conversations. Okay, we have one last item, which is governance standards and operating norms. We're actually doing pretty well on time. So, am I passing it to Dr. Lovely, and I'm passing it to you, and clerk Smith Fols?
Yeah, maybe with, with clerk Smith Fols, do you want to talk about this item, looking at the governance standards? And if people didn't have a chance to highlight, we could give everybody a few minutes?
Yes, so everyone, if we look at bylaw ninety, or ninety oh five, right? Governance standard. There are nine standards at the top, and there are eight standards at the bottom. What you are supposed to do is pick your top five and rank them in order, one, two, three, four, and five. If you don't have it on your computer, it's in our folder, right? So it's in our folder. So if you could take a few minutes, those, well, let me ask this question. Who did not rank them?
I did not rank them, I chose the five, or did not rank them?
Okay, so we're going to give you about two minutes to rank your, rank your five that you picked from one to five, one being the most important that you want to talk about, to five being the least important that you want to talk about. And then we're going to go around the room, and we're going to ask, what's your number one? And we're going to try to get a consensus as what's your number one, what's your number two, three, four, and five? And then we're going to talk about at least two, maybe three of those, since we have a little bit more time. So what you're doing now is you're ranking your one through five pick. Any questions? You see how wonderful a teacher I was after Hurst?
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am. Take a note of that. Yes.
Everybody see what we're doing? Trustee Christian, you have this picture? Look in your folks. Yeah, okay. Uh, no, not that one. The one that goes ninety oh five. Uh-huh, so take that one, and look at the, look at the standards and rank them one through five. And then we'll go back and we'll talk about this.
Pick the five that I also pointed.
You have about another minute? Dr. Hurst, are you doing this also? Doctor Hertz, are you doing this also?
I've already done it, ma'am.
Very good, you can stick your name. Thank you for coming to the class repairs, I appreciate it. One more minute, thirty seconds. Okay, when you say your top five, all you have to do is do top number two or bottom number, bottom number two, just so we'll know, right? So let me give you an example. My first one is the bottom number three. That's my first choice, the bottom number three. Got it? So in the bottom part, number three is my top choice to talk about. Does that make sense? So my second top choice to talk about is the top number two. My third choice is the top number four. My fourth choice is the bottom number four. And my fifth choice is the bottom number seven. So when you report out, that's how I need to do it so I can do the ranking here. So we can find the ones that we are in consensus to talk about. Anyone else ready to share out?
I'm ready.
Thank you. President Gonzalez-Cloyde?
My, my, number one is top one.
Okay.
My number two is top eight.
Okay.
My number three is top four.
Okay.
My number four is top seven. And my number five is bottom three.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else sharing out? Doctor Hertz?
My, my number one is top one.
Okay.
My number two is top four. My number three is top eight.
Okay.
My number four is bottom four.
Okay.
My number five is bottom seven.
Okay. Anyone else ready to share out? Give you a couple more minutes while I tally the ones that we have. Then it stops, and I'm gonna follow, I mean, so. Yeah, this is how we'll take it.
You really wanna be the teacher. You can write on that wall with those white words.
Oh, you know, if I were that, I'm gonna just be all over the place. I'll be taking names, you have attention, this'll be great. Okay, trustee Breckler, what do you have for us?
Okay, so as far as I got was, one, keep learning and achievement for all students is primary focus. Second, yeah, we can understand.
Number one.
Okay, so one is top one, okay? Your second is?
Seven, understand the distinction between board staff roles. Three, recognize and respect differences of perspective and style. Five, keep confidential matters confidential. And that's as far as I got.
Okay, so you got four. Okay, so what was your third one?
Number three, I missed that.
Number three at the top two?
Number three.
Okay.
Her fourth one was number five.
Thank you. Okay, trustee Christian, what do you have for me?
So I just, so I take what the bottom one?
So you tell me the ones that you think are the, the top five most important ones, but tell me by saying if they're at the top or the bottom of this one.
Um.
So what's your first one that you think is the most important that you wanna talk about?
The first one is, uh, uh, number one.
At the top?
At the bottom.
At the bottom, okay, so bottom one, okay? What's the second one that you think is really important?
Uh, the next one, I would say, I'd say number three.
At the bottom or at the top?
At the top.
Okay, so top three, okay?
And, let's see. It's different right now.
Okay, so this is what we have. The top number four had three votes, so we're definitely talking about that one, okay? The other ones that had two votes are bottom number three, bottom number seven, top three, the top of the page number three, the top of the page number seven, and the top of the page number eight. So we'll have to kind of figure out, uh, President Gonzalez-Cloyde, figure out which one of those you want to talk about, cause we have room for one, maybe two, maybe three. But the first one we know has, uh, Dr. Lovely, the first one we know had the most votes was top number four, act with dignity, dignity and understand the implications of demeanor and behavior.
I also counted three votes for number, the top one.
Oh, okay.
An achievement for all students as a primary focus, I count that.
So those are the two that we should focus on.
That have three.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so let's, let's start from there, Dr. Lovely. And if we have time for another one, we can figure that out when it comes.
Okay.
So board, we're gonna look at the top number one, keep learning and achievement for all students as the primary focus, and we're gonna look at the bottom number, I'm sorry, what were, top number four, act with dignity and understand the implications of demeanor and behavior. So we're looking at number one at the top and number four at the top.
And, and actually, number one at the bottom really is almost exactly like number one at the top. And we have an interest to see who had number one at the bottom. So the learning piece, I think, from collectively the group. So maybe that one is, what we wanna do talk about is, what is it supposed to look like? You know, what does it look like from the behavior standpoint of the governance team? Um, and what, what will we do when it doesn't? It's a little bit, we're segueing right from the conversation that you just finished about, you know, board meeting protocols and such. So if we're keeping learning and achievement for all students as the primary focus and focusing the district on learning, which is basically, I think, the same thing, what, what is it supposed to look like? Start, let's start there. From the governance team's aim.
So I think that this board is a unique board because we're the first board that was elected by areas, right? So we have constituents in our areas that we answer to, but I think it's important for us to remember that we're five fingers on one hand. We cannot just take care of our area, we have to take care of the entire district. So when you're talking about keep learning and achievement for all students at the primary focus, that's what we have to bring. What does the all student look like, right? So we know that each of our areas have needs and wants and concerns, but how does that fit into the whole? How do you take care of part while taking care of the whole? Or better, when you take care of the whole, you take care of the part? That's more of my, I would like us as a board to focus. When you take care of everybody, you take care of each somebody, cause you're taking care of everybody. I'm complete.
I think for me, it also means ensuring that we're not adding workload to staff that is not primarily focused on student learning and, and will lead to increasing student learning and, um, mental health. I think it's connected to that.
It is.
Um, so, so that means, you know, not putting a lot of things on the agenda that have not, that don't connect to student learning or our priorities that we have set as a board. Um, you know, uh, and I'm constrained as the board because of my role, but ensuring the board meeting's on time so that staff is not exhausted the next day, right? Or we're exhausted, right? Um, if we do side visits, that, uh, we are staying focused on student learning outcomes, right? When we're visiting classrooms or talking to a principal, et cetera. Uh, so just ensuring that we're following our own vision, right? To what we wanna see as in a district. And kind of leaving the, the noise aside, right? Because we have so much work to do and so little time in one day, right?
Uh, trustee Breckler or trustee Christian, what does it look like? Um, or what is it supposed to look like in your, uh, from your perspective?
So there should be something on every agenda about students. If they've been, you know, if, you know, it should be aligned to the goals and the objectives of the year. And how did the board meetings support? You know, like, I see it as a triangle, you know, your goals and objectives are up here, and then all your meetings should touch on, like, what is supporting those goals and objectives? Um, I mean, the best way to do it is to put something on every agenda that has to do with learning and keeping it in the forefront of the board's thinking.
How about from your perspective, trustee Christian? What, what, um, is it supposed to look like when the board's focusing on learning and achievement?
What's that, can you repeat that?
Yeah, what's it supposed to look like? When, um, the goal of focusing on learning and achievement for all students is at the forefront of what the board does? What do you think that would look like? As a board member?
Everything should, okay, the way I look at it, everything should have a punch to it. And we should be accomplishing everything what we trying to do. So, um, staying on target, staying, staying focused, keep, and keep moving in the right direction.
President Gonzalez-Cloyde, I think another thing is, if we answer the question after each kind of presentation and decision, like, how does this impact students? How does this impact student learning? How does this impact student achievement? How does this impact? So if our question as board members have a framing around that, then we're actually really concentrating on keeping learning and achievement for all students the primary focus. Because that's a question that staff should be able to answer, right? So if, for example, it said, uh, board, I need you to approve the PIP. Okay, tell me how this has an impact on student achievement and learning. Well, then I'm assuming our HR was able to, because we're able to get more teachers in the classroom faster, right? Well, that has a direct impact on student achievement and focus on learning. Cause we're, we're not having to put kids with other teachers. We now have a qualified sub at the room. Do you kind of get where I'm going with that, like, if that? And again, this is something that we don't have to ask in the diaries, it's something we can ask in our one-on-ones. How does this impact student learning and focus on student achievement? And we should have an answer to every time that we ask that question with everything that the staff brings up if we're intentionally focusing, focusing on learning and achievement. So I know as one of my commitments, I'm gonna start asking that question in my one-on-ones. Okay, tell me how this impacts and focuses on student learning and achievement for all students in the district.
Doctor Hertz, from your perspective, what, um, what does it look like on the governance team?
I agree with everything that I heard. I wrote down that in every moment, we should look for opportunities to elevate student learning. So whether that's in a board meeting and we're making, you know, specific spaces on a continuous basis where we can see what's happening at each of our schools as it relates to student learning, or activities to, um, our board comments at the end that's really focused on student learning and what board members or the superintendent have done across the district, elevate student learning, or the exciting things that we've seen in the classroom, um, or successes as well. Um, I really like what was said around really focusing on the impact of student learning because that's the first question of the strategic vetting process. Like, what is the impact on student learning that we all have to ask? So I would expect that question, uh, from board members. I also think that it looks clearly like, um, opportunities where we're clearly focusing on what we've been talking about, our X to Y, by when, and this is how we're gonna get there. This is where we are now, this is where we see our students in the future. Here's our progress, one, two, three, this is what we're doing to get to our end goal. It should be a clear focus in all of our board meetings on that.
Well, those are great capture, Kevin. I know I've taken notes, and I think Rosa has too. And so those commitments, those are commitments that the board is willing to make. And it sounds like you've made some of those commitments earlier. That, that sounds like a focus. Anything else, trustee Smith-Balls, around that?
I think that that's good, I think we captured a lot around, uh, number one.
Yeah.
What did you have as the second one, trustee Smith-Balls, that emerged as a top ranking? And we can compare notes to see if we.
It was, uh, top number four.
I have.
Dignity and understand the implications of demeanor and behavior. Which actually, I think, goes a lot with bottom number four.
I think it does too. And I'm seeing, I think a lot of the bottoms are very similar. And we had, um, a couple of trustees and superintendents that I identified bottoming before. So let's just blend those two, they're really the same. And then do the same thing, um, around the room. What, you know, what is it supposed to look like? If we are acting with dignity and understanding the implications of our demeanor and behavior and we're governing in a dignified and professional manner?
We kind of spent quite a bit of time that, discussing this in the last item. You know, I think that it's about understanding when to step away, right? Or how to speak to staff, or how to speak to community. It's about setting the example, right? Um, to our students and community at large. Um, and then also, you know, because maybe we haven't said the relationships to the point as Dr. Hertz described his last board and, and our fellow, um, we also tend to react to one another, um, because of, uh, things that are said or our own emotions, and I tend to fall into that trap. So I think also just acknowledging that whenever we say something with a certain tone or demeanor, that, that it'll create a, a reaction. So just to keep that in mind so that we, you know, keep our tone to a respectful manner.
I think that one of the things is, um, we have student trustees are right there, and they're watching us. So we all are adult enough, we work in the school system enough, most of us are parents. We understand that people are watching us. And these two kids, and they're still kids, are watching our behavior and watching how we handle tension, how we handle disruption, how we handle not agreeing with one another. Like, how are we making sure that we're an example to not just the kids that are watching us at home, but the two that are sitting right there, right? And they're watching our behavior and our demeanor and how we react to them. I think we can show them a healthy way of doing it. And a healthy way is not always swallowing your emotions, but being able to temper them with respect, right? And saying, you know what, I need a break. You know what, I need to take a moment, I need to breathe. Or you crossed a boundary with me, and I want you to kind of roll that back a little bit. That's not how I want to be spoken to or what needs to be said. I think when it says govern in a dignified and professional manner, what we agree to as a board, and that's three or more, we all need to walk that out.
Yeah.
Right? Because we had made an agreement. So it's not like we can, a board agreement is a board agreement. And we do that through policy and through our vote. So if we made that decision, then we all need to walk through that together. And we don't need to be decided, the business.
Yes.
I'm complete.
Anyone else wants to go? Trustee Breckler? Anything to add to that?
I think it was all, I'm sorry, I think it was all covered.
Trustee Christian?
Uh, um, yeah, pretty much everything was covered.
Doctor Hertz?
I'm complete.
Okay, you guys, this is the best workshop, I'm watching you all, it's so great.
I know, y'all could, y'all could not picture me. Sorry.
I did want to share, Trustee Raffler and President Gonzalez-Floyd, I checked while we were talking, there is no board bylaw on meeting protocols, so these might be some that you want to insert in your government tam. You don't have a separate board bylaw, at least in your nine thousand series that I just saw, the meeting protocols, so.
There is something in there, I have, I have to go back and look.
Okay, so go, I, but I think that a lot of this, you capturing, these commitments that you're making now can be captured, too, in your government tam, because you're...
Yeah, yeah, oh, for sure, but there is some basics. I remember there being some basic stuff, it's not extensive, I mean...
Okay, I didn't see it, maybe I missed it, it might be somewhere else, but those are all really important, and you really said, wow, Trustee Smith-Balls, everybody's, not just, I mean, the students, of course, but everybody's watching. And the best thing about video now is we can go back and watch ourselves. Sometimes it's, you know, we don't want to see how we behaved sometimes, but that's certainly something that, you know, trustees can now do if they feel like, maybe I wasn't as poised or as patient or professional. Those are options for you. Was there a third one, Clerk Smith-Balls, that you captured? I had a couple that had two on, on the, what did you say?
A lot of the ones have two on them, so I don't know if we want to go into those or if we want to just stick, you know, we need to eat the elephant one bite at a time. So I think with this board, it's good if we, we concentrated on number top one, top four, and let's implement those, and then let's have a time to come back. I don't know if it's a cabin in the woods, I don't know if we know that yet, but to come back and actually talk about and have a board debriefing about, are we doing top one and top four? Are we really committing to that? So my suggestion, Board President, would be to let's have a moment and talk about these again, before we have to have a whole nother retreat, just a conversation about, hey, are we remembering our commitments to top one and top four?
Maybe a self-evaluation on this bylaw in general, at one point, I mean, I like that idea.
Thank you.
And there's a good self-evaluation that you can use, it's from CSDA, but you can tie it exactly to your norms. So it's great to do, you know, if you did one, like, if you had a retreat in the fall, you do the self-evaluation, and then you do it again in spring, and you can also compare. So there's some tools out there, and they'll tie your handbook.
That sounds great. Wonderful, well, thank you so much for leading us on this part, Clerk Smith-Balls. This was actually our last item, I am really glad we are ending early, because I think that we talked about a lot of different issues today, very heavy issues, so I want to thank all of you for, you know, engaging in this process. Thank you, Doctor Lovely, Rosa Hennessy, Doctor Hertz. And for the public, our next agenda, I mean, excuse me, our next board meeting is tomorrow at Dejean at six thirty for us, five o'clock. So we will see you tomorrow.
Happy one hundredth day of school, Detective.
That's right.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Grace is with you later.